Please rise and see the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Lord, who is the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock on June 25, 2019. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Sandwich Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals currently has five regular members and two alternate members. The Board of Appeals can have up to four alternate members. Any decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of five is four. If only four members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. If five members vote, one member could dissent. Before we go for approval of the minutes, there's a correction to the minutes on 528, on page four, paragraph two, line 13 to 14. Tree is changed to structure. And the updated ones are in your package. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 28, 2019, and June 11, 2019?
Approve the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Tonight, guys, the board's entering into initial deliberations, and we're really, we've heard from just about everyone and anyone on both sides with opinions and facts and reports. So tonight, we're going to keep it to direct questions from the board to town staff and to the applicant and to anyone else that they may have a question for. Those will be the primary temporary deliberations, and then we will close the open meeting in order to vote and do the special permit. So, all right, we move forward.
We're still open, right?
Yeah, we're still open. We're going to be open for full discussion with anyone you have questions for, and we won't close until everyone's satisfied that they have the answers they need. So, anyone have any specific questions? I know we have some points that we have to kind of make sure we're aware of or on the same page of before we go forward. But any other questions to start, or should I just start working my way through what the points I think we have to?
I think you can work through them.
Okay.
Does the applicant have anything to add before we get going?
Ms. Cox?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the board for the time and thought that they've given on this application. We're completely comfortable with the chair's suggestion, and our whole team is here. Should the board have any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. To the board, do we think the applicant is satisfied to the board that they are not an amusement park?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions for him? Eric?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Chair, if you could elaborate on that as to why you did review the park because you could provide that information in the decision.
Sure. Can we just provide it in the decision? Or do we have to provide it now?
If you're comfortable with doing that.
Okay. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria for an outdoor recreation facility?
Under 41-50, yes.
Anybody else have any questions, yes or no?
Do you want to just go through the details of that?
Chris, are you doing deliberation or you just throwing this out there?
Preliminary deliberation.
Yes.
Okay. I know we usually deliberate after we've closed, but it's been recommended by council we move it in this direction.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we discussed that. There was no issue at any other point. It was 41-51.
I didn't see any.
The question I'm sure that is in the room is, it's a small-scale community recreation and sports facility. The definition of small scale is not elaborated in our zoning bylaw. And I know we'll deliberate that as we go through. But that's the only question I have out of 41-50 and its subsequent 41-51. All the other A, B, C, D, E, and F are fine with me.
Okay. Any other concerns?
I just have one question, well, a couple of questions, but for now for Sam on 13-42, which is the criteria for reviewing special permits. Do you have any comments or care to elaborate on any of those measures, A to G? I know some of them are really unfeasible. I just wondered if you had any comments to give, to provide further.
In terms of the site plan elements?
Yes.
Now, we reviewed the, we reviewed the site plan, and our comments essentially are summarized in our memorandum that we provided previously. And we had noted that the assumptions made in the traffic analysis appeared to be reasonable and consistent with what we would expect. They did show that there was no significant impact from the analysis that they conducted. And that, you know, we had noted that they could provide a little more detail on trip distribution and capacity analysis, but otherwise, it was generally consistent with what we would expect.
When you say the trip distribution, you're talking about how much went to heritage and how much went to the?
Trip distribution in terms of the distribution on the local road network or traffic associated with the facility. So, they did a capacity analysis that then looked at different intersections. We found there was not a significant impact, and the report was relatively brief. And so, some reports have a lot more detail, a lot more elaboration. I wouldn't necessarily say that's necessary in this particular case, but that detail, they could provide more if the board moved up there was necessary.
On that subject of traffic, I looked at the last two years, 17 and 18. And 18 went to August 31st, so I compared the two years up to that point. And I believe we, the gentleman mentioned about two and a half occupants per vehicle, something to that effect. So I came up with, in that time period, approximately 126 people per day in 18, and I think 166 in 17. An average of, I think it was 142, 143 days from opening until the end of August, and then it drops off precipitously. And what I came up with is about between 50 and 60 additional trip, vehicle trips per day for the adventure park, which equates to about five per hour, five to six more vehicle trips per hour, which is like another trip, maybe 10 or 12. Is that, are those numbers accurate? Do they accurately reflect what we would expect to see, given the numbers we actually have?
From our perspective in the engineering department, it's difficult to put comparative numbers because they're really, it's a unique facility.
It's what? I'm sorry?
It's a unique facility.
No, I agree, but I'm going by the actual attendance numbers.
Sure.
So, looking theoretically like we typically do when we're doing, reviewing a permit, we actually have real numbers. And that's why, I mean, those, as simple as calculating it in that way, we have an average number of attendance per day, you know, over a 10-hour period, it seems pretty simple to me. If that's the case, is that what we're looking at, is about five to six extra trips per hour, based on their attendance numbers?
Well, it's, there's different ways of looking at it. I don't know if your traffic engineer is, it may be better to have them elaborate on that.
No, I understand, but I figured I would get, you reviewed it and get your opinion on it.
Sure. Well, they provided a peak hour estimate, 53 trips per hour.
Correct.
And that's where the question of trip distribution comes into play. So of those 53 trips in that peak hour, how are they assigned?
Correct.
Through the local roadways and the intersections.
But the applicant also stated that their, the adventure park doesn't really have a peak period, that everything related might be too.
Yeah.
Not an existing park.
Right.
So, the additional vehicle trips, which is what we have to concentrate on, would be spread out over a period of time. Is that a reasonable assumption?
I would say so, and I think it's reasonable to infer that most days that peak hour would probably not materialize. I mean, I'd say it's a theoretical based on how they ran their analysis. So, it's likely that, based on how it's managed, that the traffic would be less than that. But again, I defer to the applicant's idea on that, but I would, I wouldn't argue the point on that. I think it's a reasonable assumption.
So, if that's the case, if we're looking at five to six extra trips per hour average, would you consider that a minor impact, or, you know, what would you, how would you characterize?
It seems to be something that the roadway network could accommodate with.
Okay.
With, it results in changes in levels of operation, so levels of services, particularly at intersections. And so, there may be additional delays with turning movements at intersections. It's unlikely it would be a significant impact, based on the levels that we're talking about. What they showed was that there would be no measurable impact in their analysis. And, you know, Paul Tilton and I looked at it and really didn't have a whole lot to offer in the way of criticism of the way that they did it.
Okay. So, the roads in question then, what, can you say roughly what they're designed to handle, what kind of traffic levels they're designed to handle? Do you characterize them?
Well, these, like we noted in our comment memo, these roads are residential in character. They are relatively low-volume streets.
Correct.
And they're certainly not to the level of like an arterial route, like Route 13, Route 6A, connector roads. What, we, you know, in terms of, are you looking for a number? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, any sort of?
Sure. Like what they had in here?
What's that?
Like what they had in their report?
Well, what you would typically design for, you know, what, if you were analyzing that road to say?
We, what we do is we look for a rule of thumb, a 25 trips per hour for the peak hour, 250 trips per day. And that's where, if it crosses the threshold, we look for an analysis similar to what they have done. And then we'll look for a level of service analysis at area intersections, all right? And then a, a look at the capacity of that. And so, they've done that.
Mm-hmm.
And honestly, it's, it looks as though it's relatively moderate.
Okay. Thank you.
Please, did anyone ask Mr. Mello a question?
No, but I submitted some materials to show discrepancies on what is good data. The average submitted, to be extended forth, relying on the data, I just want to point out there, have discrepancies between what was submitted and what was submitted for the 21st rather than the applicant's mission, and it's 94, 95, trial.
All right, that's fine.
You can compare between 2015 and 2016. If you just look at the first 25, so it's right to compare.
Okay.
Between 2015 and 2016.
All right. Moving on, the next question is in regard to small scale. There, we all know there is no definition of small scale, but, you know, I'm looking at it, you know, they're saying small-scale community recreation and sports fields. Well, if sports fields are small scale, I'm considering this small scale.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, the average, anywhere from 120 to 160 people a day over the last couple of years. Obviously, it's peak, so I don't know how you could characterize it as such. The highest was like 370 in one day.
Yeah. That was in 2017.
Yeah.
So, that was, Heritage had an average opponent, 96 people per day. I don't know what their high was. I think it was like 700.
For the adventure park.
For the adventure park.
No, I was remembering that data. The highest day was like 370.
Okay. But the, just looking at a quick average of those, the average per hour in 2015 was 29. It was 46 per hour in 2016, and 46 in 2017. So, I agree with you. I think it's small scale.
Any other comments from the board or questions for anyone? Eric, Tim?
No.
Okay. Move on. Does it meet the criteria of community? Is the next item we're going to have to work on, you know, based on how the?
And again, that's not defined to us.
No.
From the zoning bylaw.
As well.
But according to the applicant, there is, discounts are offered to the local schools. There are school programs. There are vouchers that the local restaurants use. When people leave the adventure park and go to eat, they get discounts. So I think it ties into the community very well. That's just my personal.
You know, they got a fair amount of testimony to that practice as well.
Right. And we had testimony on the other side as well, but I think the majority, and I agree that it's good for the town of Sandwich and it is a community use. Anybody, any questions for anyone? All right, we move on. Has the applicant satisfied the board that they meet the criteria of no building or other structure related to outdoor recreation facility shall be constructed or placed on a lot with an area of less than 80,000 square feet? I think that's pretty obvious.
The two yurts.
Yeah, the yurts and the deck are going to be outside. They're going to be, what, 113?
I think they're going to rebuild one of the yurts because it exceeded.
Right.
The 500 feet.
Right. All right, so no issues there.
No issues there.
No concessions. They've answered that question. And the lighting question, they strictly said that there will be no lighting. The lighting criteria for the permit, they answered that.
Yeah. I think that lighting was only used when they had, in the winter, for the lights of the?
For the old flow.
For the old flow park.
Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria that lot coverage by building structures, paving, or other, other, or, excuse me, other impervious structures or additions to any building, structure, paving, or other impervious or so not exceed 20%? And I think the answer there was 1%, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good there. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that the elements of the ropes course does or does not meet the definition of structure as presented in the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw?
That's a great question. I've had, I've read back over both the court case and all the stuff people have, and Paul at one time said it was a structure. Brendan has said it was a structure. Paul has said it wasn't a structure. I believe that Quetta says it wasn't a structure. So I'm confused. You know, we've used the analogy that it's something that must be fixed to the ground or attached to something fixed to the ground. The tree is fixed to the ground. But the, in my mind, the structure, the platforms are not attached to the trees. Now, one of the gentlemen here has sent some pictures of spikes to the trees, and both in our visit that day, and I went out again today with my binoculars, I cannot find where they're bolted into the trees. Now, perhaps we can have a discussion about that in a little bit here.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was relative to the deck, the bolting?
The bolting, it's probably not. But if it strictly sits on the wedges as it shows, now, the wedges are bolted to the four-by-fours, and then the whole platform sits on the tree. And it's by compression, in my mind. To me, that's not a fix to a tree.
No, I, I don't know. I got a hard time with that one. I mean, everything I read too, it's definitely a doubt it's a structure.
I mean, it's load patterns through the tree, attached to these things is where the definition drives you, so.
Yeah, I wish that it is. I think I've talked to Brendan several times, and, you know, it was on the fence either way.
Yeah.
And I'm leaning at this point, based on his load factors, that we aren't really considered in here, but things that attribute to the quote "structure," that, you know, he's going to, he would consider it a structure.
A structure.
And I'm not, I mean, I'm a layperson. I'm not an engineer. I don't have his background, and I don't do it every day. So I'm leaning towards calling that it is structure.
The platforms.
But.
My only concern with, you can argue both ways.
Right.
Competently. But the issue I raise is, where could you extend this definition to? Could you extend it to a clothesline? Because you could make that same argument.
Or tree tops.
Well, sure, but for a practical matter, you put up a clothesline or anything, and you could call it a structure. And I don't think it was ever intended for that purpose. So obviously, I think the definition needs work, but, and I think you could make either argument fit into it based on that.
Well, I think I'll let Brendan speak. We actually talked about clothesline.
Is that an example? You can say a bird feeder, right?
So, we did, we did talk about a clothesline, and we also talked about a cable connecting one tree to another. In considering those, I would ask you to consider a sheet of plywood. Is that a structure? Is a two-by-four a structure? I suspect your answer is not. But when those elements come together, they form a structure. It is my opinion that the whole course is a structure. The cables that hold the bridges, the platforms that are connected, I believe it is a complete structure. When we run a line from one tree to another to hang our clothes on, we don't calculate live loads and dead loads because we're not going to have our kids hanging up there, hopefully. But in this instance, we've got bridges, we've got elements that are up in the air that are, you know, 25 and 30 feet in the air, designed by an engineer, certified by an engineer, carrying dead loads of the equipment itself of about 10 pounds per square foot, and then required to carry live loads of people, probably about 50 pounds per square foot. So I think those kinds of things qualify the entire structure to be a structure. Whereas with a clothesline or a line connecting a tree, it's not really serving any purpose. We are dealing with zoning, and as many of you know, that zoning on its finest day of clarity can be quite ambiguous. So there is, there is an element of interpretation involved there. But fortunately for, for structures at least, there is a definition in the zoning bylaw, unlike community and unlike small scale and so on. And I think it's, it's pretty clear that it, what it says in the definition, that the element is attached to something on the ground. In this case, it's a tree, and I believe that's, makes the entire course a structure.
I don't disagree with that in terms of load calculation, but the definition doesn't refer to anything like that. It just says this is what it is, attached. It doesn't say attached, if it has to be calculated, if it does, if it serves what purpose.
Right.
So I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying there's, there's not the ambiguity in that definition, and I think it's not written particularly well.
Sure, I agree.
But anyway, that's the point I've been arguing, is where beyond this, that definition could be applied? And I think you can make the argument for a number of different ways, based on the requirements, well, how it's written.
Your thoughts, Bob?
No, I, I mean, I'm like 49-51 on this. I go back and forth each day. I change my mind. Is it a structure? Is it not a structure? So I think we need to save that till we do our true final.
Okay. All right. Any other comments before we move on then? All right.
But again, just not to dig it up too deep, but in case we need to ask some questions. Is there a difference, Brendan, in your mind, between compression fit and a bolted fit to the tree? Because I couldn't find any bolt to the tree, and yet people have been saying they're all bolted.
Yeah, I would consider it attached. I mean, you don't have to bolt something to, something else to attach it. You could weld it.
So compression?
Glue it. Yeah, yeah, I believe compression is attachment, for sure.
Yeah, just realize we're asking the questions now because once we close, there'll be no questions.
Yeah. If he had a problem between the two, then I wanted to open it up to.
Sure. Yes, Lyman?
Mr. Chairman, I did see the photographs that were submitted to the board, and I think that's what you're referring to.
That's correct.
So, I just, I wanted to clarify, and I know most of you were at the site visit, so you saw the course yourself, but the photographs, and I've asked my fellow kids here at the table to confirm this to me, that shows, those are photographs of the starting platform, the launch platform, which we have always said from day one is a structure. It is located more than 100 feet from the property line. So this is irrelevant to the question of whether the elements that are in the trees are structures. We have always said that this, this particular launch platform is a structure under your bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right. All right. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria that off-street shall be provided within 100 feet of any property boundary line and shall be screened from any public way or driveway?
Yes.
Has the applicant satisfied the board that they meet the criteria that spectator seats shall not exceed 100? Yes. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria that nuisance, hazard, or congestion shall not be created as a result of the special permit?
I believe they have.
I believe they have. Eric? Yep. Okay. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria that there will be no substantial harm to the neighborhood as a result of the special permit? I don't feel there will be.
Yeah, I don't feel it.
Okay. Has the applicant satisfied to the board that they meet the criteria that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw, such as the district's objectives, and will not be satisfied, or will not be satisfied as a result of the special permit?
I believe they have demonstrated that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other questions that the board has for anyone? Any final comment from the applicant or question from the applicant?
No, I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand you'll get back to the question of whether or not platforms are structures. I guess I would just ask if you could do that.
But we're getting back to that during the?
Deliberation.
During deliberation, once it's closed. So if you have anything else to add now?
So, we'd prefer that, if possible, the board deliberate on that question while the public hearing is still open. In the event, the board, I'll put it out there, in the event that the board finds that these are structures, we do have a plan that we would like to submit that brings everything outside of the 100-foot setback.
Okay.
So if possible, we'd ask the board to deliberate on that question so that we are going to submit the report.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say that the course is a structure. That's how I feel at this point. I know it's on the fence, but I'm gonna go to that 51.
Okay.
I'm going to too. I think so as well.
Yeah, I can go along with that. I think the applicant has the ability to work around that.
Okay. I mean, like I said, I was, I was on the fence. I've moved structure and not structure, structure not. And then I went back out there today, and I looked at it again, and I said it's not a structure. But based upon Brendan and people that are in the business, I can agree that it's a structure.
All right, so I think, Ms. Cox, you understand that we're going to call it.
As Arm wanted to respond quickly to that, and then, then we do have a plan that we can submit for the record, but I'd like to let him just speak for just a moment if that's okay.
That's fine.
Thank you. I do appreciate the building commissioner's interpretation, and I do understand why he would like to consider that a structure. But I have to say that, having a little bit of engineering background myself, that his definition would also include a rock that's placed on the property, a structure, or even a tree that's been cut off as a stump would then be considered a structure. I would like to just say that the platforms that are up there, they actually don't even have to be there in order for the course to operate. They're there as a, as a place where people can rest as they're going to the new, from one element to the next, because they're always tethered to something else, and that's really what we consider their lifeline and what we design our courses on. So a platform itself can just be hovering, or it could be hanging, it could be anything so that they can rest in that, but they have no load requirements, per se, where I think a building or something that, that would hold people for safety would then would need.
Barbara, can you help me vision this? I'm coming along on the ropes course. I'm tethered in. I got a clip in it, in my harness, and I'm coming along. I put my feet on the platform. I'm going to go to the next element over here. Do I unclip this and put this over here and then continue on?
So around every tree, there's actually a lifeline. So when you come from one element, you clip onto the lifeline around the tree.
On the tree?
On the tree. It has nothing to do with a platform. So the platform is just enable you to rest your feet while you do that, and then you go to?
But I unclip from cable A, and I clip to cable B?
Correct. Correct.
When I'm unclipped, my weight is on the platform.
But you've, you're never unclipped with both clips.
Oh, okay.
You're clipped to B first before unclipping A.
Correct. You're always clipped on because you cannot physically unclip both.
Okay.
So, let's say you're standing on the platform, and for some reason, the platform wedges come out and the platform goes down. You are still safely tethered to the lifeline.
But I don't hear, you mentioned that you felt that the cables themselves were structures?
Correct. Yeah, I feel that the whole course is a structure, and just, just to speak for somebody who's involved with public safety, I'm, I'm just a little taken aback that, that the idea that it's really okay for the platform to fall, because you're, you're gonna, maybe hanging on a, on a line eventually anyway. I think, I think we probably need to do better than that.
I have a point of thought. We've got to be allowed to ask questions.
If someone has a question for you, yes. Otherwise, no.
You didn't say that at the last meeting.
I said that at this meeting, because we've had two very lengthy meetings where everyone in the room got to speak.
Well, you know, a lot of us have $45,000 worth of real estate that's staying.
I understand that, Mr. Persio.
You should be watching right now that those spikes you saw, once I took pictures on, I went right into the wedge. By law, the wedge has no function.
But we're not here really talking about the spikes at this point. We're talking about, is the course a structure? Whether it's spiked or wedged is really not.
By the way, I'm, I'm, I'm Ross, he is, he is a licensed builder, licensed construction supervisor. And I'm also a graduate engineer. And I'm telling you right now, if you put spikes through and pick up the wedges, as you looked at them, then the wedges don't work.
All right. Mr. Persio, that's not, that's not the issue at the moment.
It's not the issue. We have time to say.
Everyone's had plenty of opportunity to say everything they wanted to say.
We did have an opportunity to talk about that, because we learned that on the visit. So, when, between the visit and now, we have that opportunity.
The last meeting.
The last meeting was shortly after the visit. We didn't have time to do the analysis.
All right, well, let's move on. Ms. Cox.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna submit for the record a revised plan. I have three full-size copies and several small-size copies, one for each board member. And as you'll see on the revised plan, and I have reviewed this plan with the building commissioner, with the town planner and the assistant town planner, it pulls all of the course elements outside of the 100-foot setback. So, I'll submit that.
So, you're just gonna stamp in the big ones? You don't need to stamp.
Unless you want the big one, the big one or the big one?
You want the big one?
No.
Mr. Chairman, while you're reviewing that, will we get a chance to review that before you vote today?
Sure, there, there's one right there, you can review it right now.
Okay. It's time now.
So, I guess you pulled everything right here.
Mr. Chairman, if it's helpful, I could tell you.
Yeah, please, just give a brief summary for the board.
And Horsley-Witten group is here as well. If you have any questions of them, they prepared the plan. Two courses were realigned on this plan. One is the so-called Mountain Trail Course, shown in green, and the other is the Waterfall Course that's shown in blue. And you'll see notes that talk about them being realigned. So, if you look at the starting platform, which is outside of the 100-foot setback, right here, you'll see it shows the green Mountain Trail realignment, now outside of, fully outside of the 100-foot setback. In addition, the Waterfall Course, the dark blue course, is also fully outside of the 100-foot setback. In addition, the plan notes there is a existing briefing area, where initial orientations are provided to climbers. That also is proposed to be moved outside of the 100-foot setback with this plan.
Is that the area where all you've got is two posts and cable between them?
Correct.
Is there a need to pull that outside the 100-foot? That's not a, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Well, it's cable.
This is cable?
The cable.
The cable, okay. Does this keep the original five courses?
Yes, it does.
Five elements, I should say.
Now, one question, Ms. Cox. Just is there, is there gonna be a clear number of, with the length of the season and the hours of operation? Are you gonna have a firm number rather than like open till dusk?
So, we'd also given some thought as to potential conditions, understanding from the Earth and Civil Staff Report that that might be a question for the board. What we would propose would be a condition that would provide that the adventure park shall be open to climbers no earlier than 8:00 a.m., and all climbers shall be out of the adventure park before 9:30 p.m., so that there are fixed hours. There is no lighting that's proposed, so obviously, in the day, daylight ends sooner, that would be an earlier shutdown, but the 9:30 would be a permanent shutdown.
Be the max. And you're gonna still maintain the reservation system?
Yes.
And maximum number of climbers at any one given time is still, what was it, 120?
120, yes.
What will be the last reservation of the day?
It would be back up to hours prior to closing.
Or dusk, I mean, that's obviously gonna change as the seasons change.
Exactly, and that changes. And so, we're constantly adjusting the whole time. And so, if it is at 9:30, that last reservation would be no late than 7:30. Usually, actually, because we do an extra half hour for the safety reasons and so on, so that's an hour to be the last reservation. And if it were closing by the clock, it would be somewhere around 2:30.
Just out of curiosity, just, what happens if someone doesn't get all the way through and it's dark outside?
There are, there are ways of making sure that we can keep it down before it actually gets dark. So, we have, we close down courses according to the difficulty levels earlier on. So, the black course gets closed on first. So, within 45 minutes of the closing time, we don't allow anyone to climb the black course, because that would be the most difficult to get people down, and so on and so forth. So, we gradually close the courses down.
But there are no lights for any type of emergencies or anything like that? So, you just have to go with flashlights or something?
We do, yes, they have the little head things that they need to.
I think we're also looking for a definition of season, you know, like April 1st through October 30th, or, you know, what, what definite, how would you define the season that this will be open and this will be stopping operations for the year?
Right. So, that's a little difficult to say, because we generally like to open for school vacation in March. So, we try, and that kind of fluctuates from year to year. So, if we do need to have a, a starting date, it would probably be better to say March 1st.
Okay.
The school, I, I spent a long time with them in school, but I thought we only have an April vacation here, we don't have a March vacation.
Well, some private, right. And, and some private schools have a March vacation as well. And then, also, the weather is going to dictate that, because there's some years it's just too cold that we will not.
So, we could fairly say March 1st to November 1st, November 30. I mean, you can give yourself as broad a timeframe as you'd like.
November 30th would be ideal.
Yeah, 'cause you had 11, 12.
That's correct. Some years, we, we try to stay open until Thanksgiving break, but in general, it's, it's getting too cold.
Okay. I'd, I'd rather have it be broad enough than limited.
So, the season's March 1st to November 30th. The operational hours are 8:00 a.m. until?
Maximum 9:30.
Yeah, and I know that's, it's gonna be cold anyway.
All right, does anybody on the board have to review of the plan, or any, any questions for any of our staff, or the applicant, or anyone else in the room that had comments or made submissions to us?
Yeah, I am a little curious about the numbers thing, because they are different between the two submissions. Not enough so, I mean, they are different, but both of these show that there's far less climbers than there are people visiting Heritage Museum and Gardens. But it's just kind of a weird discrepancy.
Where did this one come from? From that court case?
Yeah. See this today.
We received that today at 3:00.
Yeah, and I mean, there is quite, not that they really line up, so. I mean, they, they still show.
What about the total? Did they total?
No, no, it's no real totals, that's just a problem. You'd have to do it by hand, take forever. Maybe the totals do come out in the end, I don't know. It's a lot of addition.
Except for 2015.
Right, but it's not on this one, so I don't know.
Yeah, and I did some totals on that one.
Come out?
Yeah, pretty close. Within, you know, three or four percent.
So, you didn't see any major discrepancies between the two? I mean, of course, they're not gonna be exact.
Right.
But, you know, they probably should be.
I mean, there are not enough, like I said, the climbers are always far less than the Heritage Museum on either one.
And I think the only thing we were using this for is to determine was the small-scale and large-scale.
Correct.
Yeah, you need to get back to the laws. What appears is that the revised plan doesn't seem to move it any mu- much further to the east or to the south at all.
That's correct. We tried to keep it as calm as possible.
Okay. Any, did you have a question, sir? Now, please, keep it brief, we're trying to move this along.
I was the chairman, yes. I'd like to, I certainly want to grab on those bolts off of the trees.
Right, but, but the bolts don't have, the bolts don't have anything to do with this. They really don't. So, I, please, I'd rather if you'd just pass.
Doesn't help to find it as a structure.
We've already defined it as a structure.
Yeah, we've moved that way, Cal. We've agreed amongst ourselves, we're going to do deliberations, that these are going to be structures, and that the applicant now has to.
Move everything.
Move everything back in the 100-foot level.
And the nails are only in the platform, they're not in the trees. But it wouldn't make any difference anyways.
I went and looked at it today, I couldn't find a one that was in a tree.
All right, but that's fine, that does, it doesn't change.
It's immaterial.
It's immaterial, that's correct. So, let's move on, it's immaterial. Let's move on, it's immaterial. Sit down, Mr. Mello, we're done.
Point of clarification.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you were going through the detailed list that the office had, to get a proper connection with the evaluation, a critical requirement is that that's under Section 3540, it's outlined in the 288 submission, and it's that under Section 35, all commercial, all commercial local recreation is supposed to be screened. So, the park has to be screened for review, for the public way. In fact, I'm not sure, what I would suggest, definitely, insofar as age or plan change, I haven't had an opportunity to review. I would suggest that the board continue the hearing, allow me and the opportunity for both to take a look at the plan and address whether it meets, you know, the criteria such as, you know, environmental, which is weather issues, drainage issues, a specific compliance. I would submit they would also, might likely require local, district permission. But I would, you know, this has been a relatively transparent process whereby submissions have been posted online, distributed, or disseminated to, you know, stakeholders, stakeholders of surprise interest, you know, like, this is a total surprise to me. But now, there's been a lot of communication, the applicant is unstable, the particulars of this plan. I think it's only fair that we get to, you know, ourselves, pride ourselves in some of the detail of the plan, of those, you know, the specifics of those communications, for example. I, I, in my view, respectfully, I don't think it's available, you know, boards, swifts, review, proceed to review of this plan in a span of minutes, is hoped.
Mr. Mello, do you understand what they've done here? All they've done is take, please, they've taken the elements.
That's my point, sir.
Mr. Mello, they've.
I understand, I think on the books, I think in public, like, how many days?
It's the exact same plan, pulling elements back into their, mixing in their property. Nothing has changed.
We're the very sensitive people system here.
And we all.
Mr. Mello, Mr. Mello, that's enough, please. Mr. Mello, please, please, please don't make me use the gavel again. Sit down, please, we're done. I understand your point, and this is the reason. Okay, I understand. I understand, thank you.
Do you have a question?
No, thank you very much for your comments. All right, gentlemen. Any other questions? Or the applicant, or Brendan, or Sam, or Ralph, or Ian?
I want to go back to the, Chris, you had written to all the town departments if they had comments. Did, um, the water commission, did all the departments report back?
I believe they did.
Of conservation that would be initial.
Yeah.
They had any issues.
And nobody spoke of it? None of the departments spoke of it?
No, it was, it was nothing that I saw that was a concern, that wouldn't be handled by the process.
Yeah, I know Sam or Paul came back on the, a little bit about the traffic, you had a couple comments there. But fire had none, police had none, water quality had none.
Was there anything? Nothing from historic?
Nothing from historic. Concom?
I don't remember any of those lines, and I didn't see it in my notes. All right, anybody else have any concerns or questions before we make a motion to close the public hearing? Is everybody ready for that, or is there something else that we need to discuss?
Point of clarification, I was beginning to bring the mark across to the board, continue the hearing, allowing the politics.
Thank you, Mr. Mello, I understand that.
Thanks.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I forgot the right number. 1904 Heritage Plantation at Sandwich, and take it under advisement.
Second? Jim, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do you want me to start reading for you? Bob, is a, is this, everybody's a sample?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, the procedural history is on April 23rd, 2019, special permit application was filed under Sections 1330 and 4150 for the purpose of operating a ropes course as a small-scale recreational facility. For property located at Zero Pecassett Road and Zero Shom Road, Sessions Map 37, parcel 102, on April 26th. On May 3rd, the public hearing notice was posted in the Sandwich Enterprise. Public hearing note, public hearing was opened on May 14th, continued on May 28th, and further continued until June 25th. Public hearing was closed on June 25th. The application was accompanied by a plan dated April 2019, and further revised June 2019, entitled Zoning Board of Appeals Permitting Plan, Zero Pecassett Street and Zero Shom Road. C1. Street and zero Shom Road, C one locus map, and C two layout plan, and then we just received
Ropes Course redesign.
This is the new one?
The revised one.
Yeah. Ropes course redesign.
So, eight?
Um, six, nineteen nineteen.
There we go.
Very good, six nineteen nineteen.
This was prepared for museums and, I already, museums and gardens, sorry, that's why I have any more. Uh, the board reviewed the application, all of the materials submitted prior to the post of the public hearing, the board received and gave due consideration to the testimony given in the public hearing. Following members attended the public hearings, Nevin, Killian Jensen, Van Ruskirk, O'Neil, and Phil Mistani.
Yes, Mr. Mistani.
Let's see, findings, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings with respect to the applicant's submissions and testimony at public hearing. The board of appeals finds that the application meets requirements of Section nine, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight. Board of appeals finds that the subject property lies within the R one zoning district. Board of appeals finds that the subject property consists of approximately thirty-four acres. Board of appeals finds that the proposed use intends to operate within the boundaries of the Heritage Museum and Garden's property. Board of appeals finds that the Heritage Museums and Gardens is a nonprofit organization. Board finds that the museum use is a byright in a R one zoning district. Board finds that the Heritage Museum and Gardens have operated for fifty years. The Board of Appeals finds that the ropes course have previously operated for four seasons, beginning in twenty fifteen and ending in twenty eighteen. Board finds that the ropes course have previously operated as a Dover Amendment protected use. The Board finds that in twenty eighteen, Superior Court ruled that the Aerial Adventure Park could not operate as a Dover Amendment protected use. Board finds that the Aerial Adventure Park ceased operation in August twenty eighteen. The Board finds that the applicant is applying for a special permit. The zoning board of appeals makes the following findings with respect to Section thirteen thirty requirements. The Board of Appeals does not find that there are conditions peculiar to this case, but general, but not generally true, for similar permitted uses on other sites in the same district, for the following reasons. Uh, we have, uh, Shom Crowell Forest Campground is an embodied property with similar use in the same district. Uh, any other ones we want to add?
Heritage Museum itself. No, never mind.
Okay.
No, so just that.
I think that's good.
Uh, the Board finds nuisance, hazard, or congestion will not be created for the following reasons. Uh, we can specify the
The BHB traffic study, uh, what, three years showed a, uh,
What was the, uh, DHB?
Uh, BHB.
Yeah.
Traffic study, uh, showed minimal increase in, uh, neighborhood traffic.
Say concurred by town engineering?
Yeah, concurred by town.
Make sure Sam's comments are
It's VHB, by the way, just having
Okay, so the traffic study indicated minimal increase in traffic reviewed and affirmed by town engineer. And, how about sound?
Yeah, uh, the H, what is HMMH? I forget their full name, company. HHH, HMMH, um, provided a sound study, that, um, the conclusion, uh, no sounds audible at, uh, the condominium to other residences.
Okay, so HMMH provided sound study, which concluded there are no sounds audible from the adventure park from the running residences.
Correct. Nuisance, hazard, congestion. Okay.
So the Board of Appeals finds that there will not be substantial harm to the neighborhood for all the reasons.
And I'd like to reiterate again, VHB.
About the real estate.
The real estate appraisal. Yeah, so, VHB, I'd like to list three of them, VHB for traffic.
All right, so the traffic included there would be minimal impact on existing traffic.
Kristen Rudley.
Existing traffic conditions.
Good. Uh, HMMH, um, provided that noise would not be a factor. Can see the, um, impact analysis from Cape Cod Island's appraisal group. Concluded that no negative influence was created in the community.
Property value.
Yeah.
So CCI appraisal group concluded that no negative property value resulted from the operation of the adventure park? Anything further?
I think that should do it.
Okay. Uh, the Board finds that there is no derogation from the intent of the bylaw such that the district's objectives will not be satisfied for the following reasons. Uh, first, there's no derogation from the intent of the bylaw as the use substantially conforms to the R one district objectives, use preserves current conditions in the environment of the community. Anything further?
Not for me. You got, slip anything to add to that?
The Board finds that the stated R one district objectives will be satisfied for the following reasons, the use does not cause any harm to the environment or the district's current surroundings.
Fine.
The Board of Appeals finds that the use does not constitute an amusement park for purposes of town's zoning bylaw for use classifications. The town's zoning bylaw does not specifically design amusement park. In the absence of a definition of amusement park in the town's zoning bylaw, the Board considers the manner in which amusement parks are regulated and licensed under state law. Massachusetts Department of Public Safety regulates amusement devices under five twenty CMR five, in which, which are defined as fixed or portable mechanical devices similar to, but not limited to, Ferris wheels, carousels, rock walls, Eurobungee, or similar devices, inclined railways, or similar devices, including inflatables, challenge courses, in artificial climbing structures, as well as amusement devices as defined by ASTM. For the purpose of state regulation, amusement park is a location that has thirty-five or more amusement devices that may be operated. Under the Department of Safety Regulations, a challenge course is a type of amusement device which is not located in an amusement park or carnival consisting of one or more elements that challenge participants as a part of a supervised educational recreational curriculum. Although the Board is not bound by state law definitions under five twenty CMR five for purposes of determining the meaning of undefined terms of the zoning bylaw, in this instance, the Board considers a proposed ropes course to be akin to a challenge course which the state regulates as a single amusement device and not as an amusement park. Okay, you must have something added to that.
No. I don't think that's enough.
Uh, the Board of Appeals finds that the proposed ropes course fits the zoning bylaw definition of an outdoor recreational facility as a small-scale community recreation and sports fields or facilities allowed by special permit under Section forty-one fifty, for the following reasons. Small scale defined as the Board of Appeals finds that the proposed use qualifies as a small scale for the following reasons. First one, it fits similar uses in the neighborhood and towns such as Shom Crowell State Forest, campgrounds, beaches, and what else can be added?
Ball fields. Wing schools close, soccer fields, ball fields, sports fields.
Uh, should we comment about the, um, the attendance of roughly one hundred to two hundred people per day?
Yeah, um, I can do that, one second. Um, the, the approximate average in twenty fifteen was one hundred and thirty-six visits per day.
Mm-hmm.
In twenty sixteen, it was one hundred ninety-seven visits per day, and in twenty seventeen, it was one hundred fifty-seven visits per day. Oh, it is, I took the total, divided by the number of days of operation.
Yeah.
And came up with an average.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I, I made it down to eight days.
Yeah, and then I tried to go by, you know, an eight-hour day and divide
So we can say between one fifty and two?
Between, between one hundred and fifty and two hundred per day.
Versus heritage?
Which was, um, between four seventy-five and five hundred per day average.
But that's not relevant to the small scale?
No. But it's a comparison of a, about, something in there.
Okay, the next one is a breakdown of the heritage visitors versus the park.
Good.
It's about, uh,
About twenty percent.
So
That the, uh, on average, the ropes course attracts approximately twenty percent of the, the amount of Heritage Museums and Gardens.
Did you base that on the entire year?
Yes, I did.
So it, it's about a twenty percent of the existing traffic?
Yeah.
Okay, so the proposed, the proposed adventure park represents a twenty percent increase in visitors compared to the, with the Heritage Museum facility?
Correct.
Uh, small scale?
It meets all the parameters.
Meets all the small-scale parameters at fourth and forty-one fifty. Okay, community, the Board of Appeals finds that the proposed use can be defined as a community recreation use for the following reasons. Discounted rates are offered to local schools, scouts, teachers, first responders in military, as well as free free passes a year for neighbors of running Heritage Gardens. Local businesses have benefited from the proposed use in the past. Ticket stubs from the ropes course can be used for discounted food in local restaurants. The planning and development office are in receipt of numerous letters of support from the Sandwich residents, further, furthering the definition of community for this use. Uh, recreational facility, the Board finds that the proposed use is a recreation facility for the following reasons. The zoning bylaw definition of recreation facilities includes uses such as rock climbing walls, which are commercial in nature and open to the general public. I guess that's, if you want to comment, that it's similar.
Similar to a climbing wall? Oh, it's already in there, such as rock climbing walls.
Okay.
Before you go any further, I want to see what the definition is.
Is there a definition?
It's listed in the, yeah.
All right, someone had, um, which are commercial in nature, similar in operation.
No.
Other for, seen operation. Anything?
No.
Uh, the Board of Appeals considered the special permit criteria of Section forty-one fifty of the protective zoning bylaw applicable to outdoor recreational facility, finds that the following criteria are met. No building or other structure related to the outdoor recreation facility shall be constructed or placed on the lot with an area of less than eighty thousand square feet. Such structures shall be single-story, shall be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and shall not exceed five hundred square feet. In residential districts, concession stands located in a permanent structure are expressly prohibited, and the Board of Appeals find that the criteria is met for the following reasons. Uh, we can say C attached plan?
Yeah. Yep. And it's thirty-five point three seven acres, need to bring that up.
Lighting is prohibited for fields and parking areas related to outdoor recreational facilities located in residential districts and commercial and industrial districts. Lighting is permitted only at, uh, between dusk and ten P M.
We don't need, we don't need to have that in there, it's not a commercial.
No, but it, we're going through and we're listing the applicability to forty-one fifty, that it meets those requirements. Um, Board finds that this criteria is met for the following reasons.
Are you noting that the lighting that is in that part from law is for use on heritage?
Uh, no, because that's existing, it's not being proposed.
Right, okay.
Uh, lot coverage by building structures, paving, and other impervious additions to any building structures, paving, impervious service, shall not exceed twenty percent. Board of Appeals finds this is met.
Yeah.
One percent?
It was one percent. One percent.
One point four, one point four.
Uh, let's say less than two percent.
There you go.
Buildings or structures, including any accessory buildings or structures, shall not be located within a hundred feet of any property line. The Board of Appeals finds that this criteria is met for the following reasons.
Per drawing submitted.
Submit a plan details compliance with the required hundred percent. Off-street parking shall be provided and shall be located within one hundred feet of any property boundary. Shall be screened for any public way, private way. Board of Appeals finds that this criteria is
The, the new drawing shows it within a hundred feet, inside a hundred feet.
Submitted plan details compliance with this requirement. Spectator's seat shall not exceed one hundred in number. Board of Appeals find this criteria is met. Following reasons.
Yep, they stated, uh, there is no, what did they say? How'd they put it? There was a couple picnic tables. So they, they would be under the max or after max. There's no seating for greater than a hundred people.
So applicant has demonstrated compliance.
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, the board finds in its discretion that the proposed outdoor recreation facility is allowed as a second principle of use of a non-residential property, and that the lot area in which the proposed ropes course will be located is one million, five hundred forty thousand, seven hundred and seventeen point two square feet in area, which exceeds by at least eighty thousand square feet, the current minimum lot area for our R1 district if the subject parcel is located. Board of Appeals finds that the element of the ropes course, uh, does not, does meet the, the definition of a structure under the protective zoning bylaw.
One under section thirty-five forty about, uh, commercial outdoor recreation must be screened in all districts. I think we should look at the plan again for that.
Okay.
No, that wasn't in there.
Okay, we can screen.
Yeah. But I think you see the point that you brought up. Let's get to that now.
Okay, so what is that, Tim?
Um, section thirty-five, uh, forty, uh, commercial outdoor recreation must be screened from any, uh, adjacent residential use or district by a wall fence, or densely planted trees or shrubs, three feet or more in height will be equivalently, equivalently obstructed by natural vegetation.
And that was what, thirty-five, fifty?
Thirty-five.
Forty.
Forty.
Yes, I demonstrated compliance because they planted, they planted the trees.
Yeah, I think that the plan submitted, what we saw on site, demonstrated that compliance.
Those are evergreens, right?
Evergreen, yeah.
This is a lot of glass.
All right, and they screened out here.
So now what's the screening for?
Uh, along, uh, Shom Road.
Yeah, but the, the bylaw was for roadway screening or just poppy, up on the property?
Says must be screened from any adjacent residential use or district.
But that's it.
Doesn't mean. Parking areas of six or more cars contracted yard. It also says parking areas where open storage or loading or service yards.
Public way from what's here, the other way is visible. Oh, it says, "sales display areas of merchandise which they don't have." I can have that. I think that covers it. Equivalently obscured by natural vegetation.
All right, so the applicant demonstrated compliance with thirty-five forty with the installation of evergreen trees to screen the proposed adventure park for residential uses.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything additional? The park.
Oh, because this is separate, yeah.
Yeah, that's a separate.
Parking areas of six or more cars shall be similarly screened from any adjacent.
Yeah, we have that finding in, in the other section where we discussed off-street parking, and it shall be screened in some any public way.
Okay.
So we do have that.
Because that was covered under the other, other, other one, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, or any other? I didn't have any other findings. Anybody else have anything or comments or additions to the findings? No? All right, well, I'm making a motion. To adjourn the findings.
I'll second.
Uh, do we take an individual vote, or do we just all in favor?
We could take, we could do a vote.
We'll take an individual vote. Chris, yes?
Tim, yes.
Bob, yes. Eric, yes?
Tim, yes.
All right.
All right, so conditions. Uh, public hearing, the zoning Board of Appeals consider potential conditions of approval for the special permit. The board voted the, uh, following conditions of approval, and they shall be imposed upon the special permit approval that these conditions are reasonable, and the applicant and its successors and interests shall be bound by these conditions. Failure to comply with all the conditions set forth in the decision shall terminate the grant and the special permit. Pursuant to the requirements of the Sandwich Protective Zoning Bylaw, section thirteen thirty, the grant, the special permit shall expire upon both the transfer of ownership prior to initiation of substantial construction on or occupancy of a site, unless such transfers are authorized in this permit, or if no substantial construction or occupancy takes place within twelve months of the special permit approval, excluding such time required to pursue or await the determination of appeal referred to, uh, in MGL, chapter forty, section seventeen. Special permit should not take effect until it is recorded at the possible county register C F D. It's in a copy. Of the recorded special permit is provided. Planning board? Zoning board?
What?
Planning office, okay. Okay, lighting is prohibited for fields and parking areas. Concession stands are prohibited. This includes the sale of any beverages or food. Reservation system for the use must remain in place to help manage vehicle activity. There should be a maximum of one hundred and twenty climbers at any given time. Cisions shall be defined as.
March first. March first to November thirtieth.
Is, is concession stands more, it's a permit?
Yeah.
It looks like a car. I don't know.
Music shall be prohibited. Hours of operation.
Eight A M till nine thirty. Or prior.
That was Monday through Friday, right?
Um, no, I think that was seven days. Seven days.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry. Uh, all parking must be screened from a butters as defined in section thirty-five forty of the protective zoning bylaw. Proposed ropes course must be constructed in accordance with the site grant entitled.
Do we do that again?
Yes.
Okay, zoning Board of Appeals permitting plan. Permitting plan. Zero Pocasset Street and zero Shom Road.
This is the new one.
New one. Ropes course redesign. You go.
Zero Pocasset Street.
Right, and zero Shom Road, Shom Road. Um, ropes course redesign. Dated six nineteen, February nineteen.
Any change, extension, or alteration may not be implemented without prior approval of the zoning Board of Appeals. Any other conditions?
At the first meeting, we talked about putting on a, uh, condition that we remain with, uh, five courses. Do we want to keep that in the conditions?
Well, the only thing is if they wanted to change it, they'd have to come back to us, right?
If they change.
If they change anything, they'd have to come back to us.
Yeah. Any extension, alteration. All right, can I have a motion to oppose the conditions of approval? I make Chris. I think we had some notes about other additional conditions. I think he did cover them. Just give me one more second. Maximum people, we've got that in there, right?
What's that?
Maximum people.
On the course, yeah.
Yep, one twenty. No, I, you got it. All right, ready? Uh, can I have a motion to oppose the above conditions on approve, of approval? I'll move the conditions.
I'll second.
Uh, Chris, yes?
Tim, yes.
Bob, yes. Eric, yes?
Tim, yes.
Okay, after reviewing the application, the plan and the materials submitted, after giving the due consideration to testimony given the public hearing, the board hereby approves the special permit application. The purpose of operating a ropes course on property located at zero Pocasset Road and zero Shom Road. Sandwich as a, shown on assessors map thirty-seven, parcel one and two. I move the, uh, to approve the special permit in consideration of the findings of the zoning Board of Appeals and subject to the conditions stated herein.
I'll second. Uh, Chris, yes?
Tim, yes.
Bob, yes. Eric, yes?
Tim, yes.
All right, everyone, uh, we, uh, we're going to move on with the meeting. That special permit has been approved. And, uh, if anybody would like to stay and watch paint dry for a little bit, you're welcome to. We have no new business. We have any items on board discussion? Um, we have no other deliberations. Other matters not recently anticipated by the chairman, not this evening. How about a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn. How about a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.